Recording in progress.
We want to welcome everyone to the afternoon session of our October 19 meeting. And since we're still under the auspices and the direction of the state of California, the governor's oracle, for lack of a better word, and directive on how to run a meeting. And then I know our Assemblymen Rivas and Salinas just had some legislation passed. So we're continuing to do a hybrid meeting. So before I call it to order, I want to turn it over to our vigilant city clerk Clementine, who's going to tell everybody how to participate in this sometimes complex hybrid meeting. So Clementine, the floor is yours, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. The City of Monterey has committed to the safe after attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all who attend in person, regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that all attendees in the council chamber keep their phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference and feedback with this hybrid meeting. And we seek to continue to offer virtual methods for public participation in meetings. If you aren't joining us in person here in the council chamber, there are two ways to virtually participate. You may join the meeting directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To call into the meeting, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID 1607729333 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which we will show using a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account, which is accessible at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving your public comment. Over to you, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks so much. And we'll call our meeting to order. It's my honor to be your mayor, Clyde Roberson. And with your caring city council is Dan Albert, council member who is here in our chambers, along with Ed Smith also here. Then joining us through Zoom is Alan Hoffa, our council member, as well as Tyler Williamson. And that is your council that's here for you. And so at that point, let's go to public comments. This would be anything not on the agenda. If people want to share some thoughts, please be sure to leave a contact because I absolutely guarantee you, and there aren't a lot of guarantees in this world anymore, but I can guarantee you that our outstanding staff will get back to you if you leave a contact and not only back to you, but quickly. And so with that, if you have public comments not on the agenda that relate to the city of Monterey and our jurisdiction, we'd love to hear from you. Anyone here in the council chambers would like to share some thoughts? Nope? All right, then we will turn it over to our vigorous Nat Rochan Assitera, our assistant city manager.
Yep, and I think actually Clementine will be taking public comment from the public online as well for us today.
Okay, very good. All right, Clementine, anyone with the hand raised?
I believe she's still muted, so.
I'm just having Zoom difficulties. The participants list went away as soon as I shared a screen. I'm sorry. Here we go. We have Jean Rash to speak. Jean, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just briefly want to ask that we finalize our small cell tower protocol that we all worked so hard on and spent so much money with Mr. Van Eaton and the planning commission, the small cell tower commission, and all the public input and all the participation, hundreds of hours of effort and tens of thousands, if not 100,000 of dollars. And I hope we can finalize that real soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean.
And I don't see anyone else waiting to speak.
All right, then let's go ahead to our consent items. Were there any public desire to pull any of the items that we know of? Or council want to pull anything from consent or request or comment?
Just comment on 10.
Okay, comment on 10 from Councilmember Ed. Any public? Clementine will let us know. So why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, this item, part of the consent is item 10. I'm sorry?
It's a good one.
Okay, yes, adopt a resolution appropriating $35,000 the first night, which is one of the things that has been around for a number of years. And so I'm so pleased that we're able to do this and just wanted to continue to express support for the event because it's, as I read some of the responses from some support, it has a very wide support as a community event. It's a great way to kick off the first of the year and say goodbye to, in this case, 2021 on December 31st. So First Night will continue to be part of the community. And I think it really serves us well and has a place because it brings community out, concentrates on art and crafts and youth, and doing so in a very sober way and alcohol-free. So continue to support that event. Thank you for all those that are volunteers, the organization First Night, and the police that were able to do this part.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Ed. Any other council comments, questions about the consent? All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay, all right, Clementine can decide who was faster.
I think Ed beat me there.
I thought I heard Ed first.
Okay. By again, state mandate, all of the votes have to be by roll call, so we'll do roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. Oh, before we adjourn to closed session, we would invite anyone who is with us in person, if you have a comment about any of the closed session items. All right, and was there anyone online who had a comment about our closed session items at all?
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right, with that then, we will adjourn to closed session and set a new world's record for our afternoon session. All right, good. Thanks, everybody, to show up and.
According in progress.
We're going to want to welcome everyone to our evening session. We had an afternoon session and shortly we will have announcements from closed session, but not quite yet. So we welcome everyone. I'm going to ask Clementine, please to show the flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance for those obviously in the council chambers as well as on the Zoom meeting.
Got it right here. Hang on one second.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, there we go. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, usable with liberty and justice.
And justice for all. Thank you so much. I was going to ask our ever vigilant city clerk to introduce the caring city council, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and I'm here as well. And so we would, first thing we're going to do is continue public comments. And this would allow anyone in the council chambers or who is attending by Zoom. Oh, before we do that, Clementine, do we need to explain how to participate in the meeting again or not?
I'm happy to do that, sure.
It's probably not a bad idea because a lot of folks maybe didn't attend this afternoon. Okay, if you would do that, please, we appreciate it.
Good idea. The city of Monterey is committed to the safe attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status except those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that attendees in the council chamber keep phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference and feedback with the meeting. And we continue to offer virtual methods for public participation in meetings. If you aren't joining us in person here in the council chamber, there are two ways to virtually participate. You may join the meetings directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertmonterre.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find today's agenda under the recent tab. To call into the Zoom meeting, dial toll-free 833-568-8864 and then enter meeting ID 1607729333 pound, and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which we will show using a countdown timer on the screen. If you are connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account, which is accessible at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comments.
Thanks for that overview. And we'll just remind everybody by state law, we are allowed to have remote meetings and in-person meetings. And the council has for several weeks now and months, along with our very wise city manager, we've been doing a hybrid meeting, and that's why we do have the city council chambers with staff and council members there as well as other council members and staff who are joining remotely, but everyone actively engaged, of course. So first thing, again, the public hearing would be anything not on the agenda. You have up to three minutes. Anything within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And as always, if you desire a response from our staff, please leave a contact either now or you can email suggest@monterey.org. By state law, the Brown Act, we as a council can't discuss or get into the details of anything that you bring up right now because it has to be on the agenda for any kind of discussion, motions, etc. So with that, again, back to Clementine, do we have some folks who want to share some thoughts with us tonight, things that are not on the agenda?
Do you have one hand raised on the telephone? Matt, is there anyone there in the chamber?
No one here in the council chambers.
All right, then we will hear from a phone caller with the last three digits, 902. Reminder, dial start, there you go.
This is Nina Beatty. I want the city of Monterey to stop Slammer. Last week, AT&amp;T and the Naval Postgraduate School hurriedly erected a 5G cell tower next to the beach for a new facility they're creating at Del Monte Beach without any public notice or meetings and no public environmental review. The facility, called Slammer, Sea, Land, Air Military Research for New Warfighting Applications, says Naval Postgraduate School, encroaches on this community and the earth. The Naval Postgraduate School release that I finally was able to find has false information even about the 5G tower. It claims, and AT&amp;T claims, it's a temporary tower. It will be replaced with a permanent tower as soon as Naval Postgraduate School and AT&amp;T find out how much power, height, equipment, or range they want. They say it's short-range, only transmits with the Navy property. That's physically impossible, and no RF report has been developed or given as to the equipment and the power. And the antennas are oriented, they say, to Slammer's water tanks. But that's a lie because the antennas aren't oriented in all directions. So this, and this will be used every day with quarterly, week-long, high-intensity use, and no guarantee that the activity or use won't be much higher. This big expansion of the military footprint and operations here will affect the ocean, the land, the public, the public space, and the overall marine environment. Where is the full environmental impact review under the National Environmental Protection Act? Where's the CEQA review under California law? Where's any public due process and review? The Navy is a gross polluter and destroyer of the ocean and the land. Its exercises at the Mariana Islands every year alone kill 81,000 whales and dolphins. We experience their pollution from the Navy airfield, and there's radioactive contamination at the Naval Postgraduate School reported on the state website. This is, I cannot believe that the city has taken no steps to stop this. They're going to be doing ground-based and flight experimentation from this site that is in the marine sanctuary. There's going to be noise and pollution and RFE MF radiation. This is right adjacent to the public beach, the state park. This is war machine development, and it's to drive US military superiority, which is from the Naval Postgraduate School press release as well. This is the Slammer lab, and I quote, "is intended to allow us to simultaneously engage terrestrial systems, subterranean systems, aerial systems, surface systems, and subsurface systems in one." This is a substantial change to this environment, and I ask the city to strenuously oppose this encroachment on the public, on the environment, on the earth.
According in progress.
We're going to want to welcome everyone to our evening session. We had an afternoon session and shortly we will have announcements from closed session, but not quite yet. So we welcome everyone. I'm going to ask Clementine, please to show the flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance for those obviously in the council chambers as well on as on the Zoom meeting.
Got it right here.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, there we go. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, with liberty and justice and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I was going to ask our ever vigilant city clerk to introduce the carrying city council, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoppa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, and I'm here as well. And so we would, first thing we're going to do is continue the public comments. And this would allow anyone in the council chambers or who is attending by Zoom. Oh, before we do that, Clementine, do we need to explain how to participate in the meeting again or not?
I'm happy to do that. Sure.
It's probably not a bad idea because a lot of folks maybe didn't attend this afternoon. Okay, if you would do that, please, we appreciate it.
Good idea. The city of Monterey is committed to the safe attendance of its public meetings. Masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two years old or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. We ask that attendees in the council chamber keep phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference and feedback with the meeting. And we continue to offer virtual methods for public participation in meetings. If you aren't joining us in person here in the council chamber, there are two ways to virtually participate. You may join the meetings directly on zoom.gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertmonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find today's agenda under the recent tab. To call into the Zoom meeting, dial toll free 833-568-8864 and then enter meeting ID 1607729333 pound and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that will be established for today's meeting, which we will show using a countdown timer on the screen. If you are connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account, which is accessible at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with an approximate 10 second delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90 second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comments.
Thanks for that overview and and we'll just remind everybody by state law. We are allowed to have remote meetings and and in-person meetings and the council has for several weeks now and months, along with our very wise city manager, we've been doing a hybrid meeting. And that's why we do have the city council chambers with staff and council members there as well as other council members and staff who are joining remotely, but everyone actively engaged, of course. So first thing, again, the public hearing would be anything not on the agenda. You have up to three minutes. Anything within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And as always, if you desire a response from our staff, please leave a contact either now or you can email suggest@monterey.org. By state law, the Brown Act, we as a council can't discuss or get into the details of anything that you bring up right now because it has to be on the agenda for any kind of discussion, motions, et cetera. So with that, again, back to Clementine, do we have some folks who want to share some thoughts with us tonight? Things that are not on the agenda.
Do you have one hand raised on the telephone? Matt, is there anyone there in the chamber?
No one here in the council chambers.
All right, then we will hear from a phone caller with the last three digits, 902. Reminder dial start. There you go.
This is Nina Beatty. I want the city of Monterey to stop Slammer. Last week, AT&amp;T and the Naval Postgraduate School hurriedly erected a 5G cell tower on next to the beach for a new facility they're creating at Del Monte Beach without any public notice or meetings and no public environmental review. The facility called Slammer Sea, Land, Air Military Research for New Warfighting Applications, says Naval Postgraduate School, encroaches on this community and the earth. The Naval Postgraduate School release that I finally was able to find has false information even about the 5G tower. It claims and AT&amp;T claims it's a temporary tower. It will be replaced with a permanent tower as soon as Naval Postgraduate School and AT&amp;T find out how much power, height, equipment, or range they want. They say it's short range, only transmits with the Navy property. That's physically impossible. And no RF report has been developed or given as to the equipment and the power. And the antennas are oriented, they say, to Slammer's water tanks. But that's a lie because the antennas aren't oriented in all directions. So this, and this will be used every day with quarterly, week-long, high-intensity use and no guarantee that the activity or use won't be much higher. This big expansion of the military footprint and operations here will affect the ocean, the land, the public, the public space, and the overall marine environment. Where is the full environmental impact review under the National Environmental Protection Act? Where's the CEQA review under California law? Where's any public due process and review? Navy, the Navy is a gross polluter and destroyer of the ocean and the land. Its exercises at the Mariana Islands every year alone kill 81,000 whales and dolphins. We experienced their pollution from the Navy airfield and there's radioactive contamination at the Naval Postgraduate School reported on the the state website. This is, I cannot believe that the city has taken no steps to stop this. They're going to be doing ground-based and flight experimentation from this site that is in the marine sanctuary. There's going to be noise and pollution and RFE MF radiation. This is right adjacent to the public beach, the state park. This is war machine development and it's to drive US military superiority, which is from the Naval Postgraduate School press release as well. This is the Slammer Lab and I quote, "is intended to allow us to simultaneously engage terrestrial systems, subterranean systems, aerial systems, surface systems, and subsurface systems in one." This is a substantial change to this environment. And I asked the city to strenuously oppose this encroachment on the public, on the environment, on the earth, on the ocean. I just, I cannot fathom how the Naval Postgraduate School can embark on something. I know they have a conference this week that they're participating in using drones and all kinds of autonomous vehicles. And this is likely, that's why they threw up the cell tower. So I want you to stop.
And Mayor, I do not see any more hands raised.
All right. Thank you. As always, we appreciate the public comment. Let's go ahead then to announcements from closed session, please.
Okay, this will be long. Okay, item one on the closed session agenda was a conference with real property negotiators on a property at 48 Fisherman's Wharf. Fisherman's Wharf One concessions 22 to 23 and 30. Agency negotiators Kimberly Cole and Hans Uslar. Negotiating parties Chris Archileo under negotiation terms and conditions for a new ground lease. And the action taken on a unanimous roll call vote, the council authorized the mayor to execute a new ground lease with Chris Archileo for the premises located at 48 Fisherman's Wharf. Wharf One concessions 22 to 23 and 30 under the following terms and conditions. Premises square feet concession 22 to 23. Building area Chris fishing 530 square feet, open area Chris fishing 28 square feet. Water space staircase 197 square feet. Water space 1,265 square feet. Concession 30 building area restaurant 998 square feet, open area restaurant 100 square feet. Gross square footage 3,118 square feet. Lease type ground lease use fishing and whale watching charters and restaurant. Lease and rent commencement, the lease and rent shall commence on the effective date as defined in the lease agreement. Termination date, December 31st, 2040. Sorry, December 31st, 2040. Minimum rent building and outdoor areas $1.75 per square foot per month or percentage rent, whichever is greater. Water space and staircase year one, $1 per square foot per month or percentage rent, whichever is greater. Year two, $1.25 per square foot per month or percentage rent, whichever is greater. Year three, $1.67 per square foot per month or percentage rent, whichever is greater. Annual adjustments, minimum rent shall be adjusted annually by any increase in the consumer price index CPI for the San Francisco Oakland Hayward area index for all urban consumers. If no, in no event shall the CPI increase be less than 2% or greater than 5%. Percentage rent fishing and whale watching charters, 4% of gross sales, restaurant, 4% of gross sales. Sublease revenue, any sublease revenue in excess of minimum rent paid to the city shall be shared 10% to city and 90% to tenants as long as Chris Archileo is an active owner, 51% business interest. When Chris Archileo is no longer an active owner, 51% business interest, the sublease revenue shall be shared 25% to city and 75% to tenant. Rental review with change of ownership, rental review will occur with any change of ownership. Common area maintenance or CAM fee. Tenant shall pay a common area maintenance fee in the amount of 20 cents per square foot per month. 530 square feet building area plus 28 square foot open area plus 998 square foot building area plus 100 square foot open area equals 1,656 square feet. Water space and access stairs 197 square feet plus 1,265 square feet equals 1,462 square feet. Aren't excluded from CAM fee. Piling and substructure, tenant shall be responsible for repair and maintenance of all structural and fender piles within the leased premises excluding open area 100 square feet plus 28 square feet equals 128 square feet. Repairs and maintenance, tenant shall be required to repair and maintain the leased premises, including structural and fender piles. Fire sprinklers landlord shall maintain fire sprinkler system up to the premises. Tenant shall maintain the fire sprinkler system within the premises. Tenant improvements, tenant shall obtain a certified access specialist or CASP survey and provide the survey to the city. Tenant is required to obtain permits funded to construct any improvements identified in the survey. Improvement schedule will be specified in the lease. Tenant shall be required to fix the water heater exhaust vent and roof overhang leak fascia board within 60 days of lease execution. Tenant shall obtain required building permits for any tenant improvement work. Utility expenses. Tenant agrees to pay for all utilities, which shall include but shall not be limited to electricity, gas, water, sewer, and trash services service that is provided by the Monterey City Disposal and the city of Monterey. Taxes and insurance, tenant agrees to pay for any and all taxes related to possession of the property. Tenant agrees to ensure the building. Security deposit waived. Personal guarantee, the lease shall be personally guaranteed by Mr. Chris Archileo. Force majeure, the following language to be included in the lease. If performance by a party of any portion of this lease is made impossible by any prevention, delay, or stoppage caused by strikes, lockouts, labor disputes, acts of God, pandemics, inability to obtain services, labor or materials, or reasonable substitutes for those items, government actions, civil commotions, fire or other casualty or other causes beyond the reasonable control of the party obligated to perform. Performance by that party for a period equal to the period of that prevention, delay, or stoppage is excused. Tenant's obligation to pay rent, however, is not excused by this section. Either party shall have the right to terminate this lease in the event of force majeure for a consecutive 12-month period. On item two, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation or significant exposure to litigation related to a notice of California Voting Rights Act violation by the League of United Latin American Citizens, LULAC District 12, received on September 25th, 2021. On a unanimous roll call vote, the city council gave confidential directions to its legal counsel and continued the matter to October 27th, 2021. And on the third item, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation and or significant exposure to litigation, Mary Eccles claimed dated February 24th, 2021. On a unanimous roll call vote, the council gave confidential directions to its legal counsel. And that is the end of the report. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you. Very thorough. We appreciate that. Better, better, lots of information than not enough, right? So let's go to our first public hearing, please, and this is pertains to ADUs accessory and junior accessory dwelling units. As we know, housing is a high priority for the city of Monterey and also various laws each legislative session come out of Sacramento and ADUs have been disc golf and ADUs have been a constant discussion. So I'm seeing disc golf on my screen. So there we go. So I do want to just before you even begin, thank our, our community development department, our legal department for their wonderful work on this. Also, our planning commission that did extraordinarily good due diligence, they always make our job easier. And finally, for all the public input, it's a very complex subject. And I think it's one that's evolved over the years. So the idea of having ADUs, I think, is pretty universally accepted now. And the whole point here is to make sure it's compatible with people who live here already. So with that, I'll turn it over to our well-known city manager, Hans Uslar.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you pointed out, what we are doing today is a result of state law that was passed in January 2020, 2019, I'm sorry, and not 2020. And time flies when you have a pandemic and
Yeah, really.
We brought this topic to you exactly 13 months ago in September 2020, when we introduced the, the changes in the state law, asked for your guidance. And you provided the, the city staff with some guiding directions that we passed on to the planning commission. The planning commission received this item the first time, two months after we presented it to you in November 2020 and has since then worked on that diligently. I think there was a total of three meetings held by the planning commission in which they processed a lot of qualified public input. And tonight, what we are bringing forward to you is, is a recommendation from the planning commission for an ordinance amendment. And that presentation will be given to you by our community development director, Kim Ko.
Thank you, city manager, and it's a pleasure to be in front of the council this evening. This evening, you're considering an ordinance amendment to our zoning code regarding both accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And it's the first reading of the proposed ordinance this evening. As our city manager described, the California State Legislature brought forward several bills relating to the planning and the permitting of accessory dwelling units to address the housing supply crisis. Those new laws took effect on January 1st, 2020. And the proposed ordinance brings the city into compliance with state law. And I should add, since the adoption of the laws, we've had to comply, but it hasn't been integrated directly into our ordinances and procedures. So what is an accessory dwelling unit as defined by the state of California? It's an attached or detached dwelling unit. It, it has to contain complete independent living facilities. It can be located on the same parcel as a proposed or existing single-family dwelling or multifamily dwelling. So I think that's really important. A lot of people don't understand that it also applies to multifamily properties. And the state basically prescribed some basic zoning standards as well. They established the site and rear yard setback at four, four feet. They specifically say in the state law that ADUs are exempt from the owner occupancy requirement until 2025. I think most of us fully expect by 2025, they will continue to exempt after that date. And this is an important point. Cities cannot require replacement of lost parking spaces when a garage, carport, or covered parking structure is cover is converted into an ADU. So you can take your garage at your single-family house, convert, convert it to an accessory dwelling unit and replacement parking cannot be required. The maximum height for new construction detached ADU at a site with a single-family or multifamily building is 16 feet. But cities can adopt less restrictive standards regarding this issue. Multifamily ADUs, they're allowed in the developed portions of an existing multifamily building that are not, that are not being used as housing. So what we're seeing is we're discussing this with developers as most developers are looking at converting some of the parking on a multifamily property into an ADU. The number of ADUs is equivalent to 25% of the units on the site or one. And then there's an additional bonus allowed. It's sort of either or. So they can provide that one unit or alternatively, they can build two new detached ADUs on the multifamily property.
Kim, the parking spaces that developers replace, like, do they have to be replaced or is that the same requirements?
They do not have to be replaced.
Thank you.
Can, Kim, can a single-family home have more than one ADU on their property if it's large enough?
They can have one ADU and one JADU.
Okay, attached.
So that's a good segue is what is a JADU? It's called a junior accessory dwelling unit. And it's no more than 500 square feet inside. It can include an efficiency kitchen consistent with building code standards. The unit is contained entirely within an existing or proposed single-family dwelling, including attached garages. And the unit can include either separate sanitation facilities or shared sanitation facilities with the existing residents. And I just want to pause there and explain that. So why a JADU has to have an efficiency kitchen? It can share a bathroom with the main house. So what we're seeing most often at the public counter is perhaps a freestanding ADU is proposed. And within the garage, perhaps a JADU is proposed. If they have enough water credits. JADUs are a little bit different than ADUs. Owner occupancy is required for JADUs unless the owner is a governmental agency, a land trust, or a housing organization. We don't have any of those yet in the city of Monterey. I know in Santa Cruz County, organizations like Habitat for Humanity are developing a JADUs and ADUs. And this is a key additional point. Cities can require replacement parking for a JADU that replaces an existing garage if that requirement is adopted by the local agency. And so this ordinance in fact does that. And once again, ministerial approval is required of JADUs and ADUs. And what ministerial approval means is that no planning permit can be required. They go to the building department and meet these development standards and the city must approve them.
Kim, before you leave that, if you, we may, when we talk about replacement parking that replaces an existing garage, that necessarily have to be another garage or covered. Because obviously if someone has a long driveway, they almost automatically have extra parking.
Well, and in fact, the planning commission debated this issue and it'll be one of the issues I'll share with you as the topic issues is they required replacement parking for JADUs. We didn't have to, but the planning commission is recommending that to you this evening.
Understood. Then the second council member Dan asked, how many ADUs can you have on a property? And the answer was you could have the original house, so to speak, and two. One junior and one ADU. But under SB 9, I think you can also subdivide the lot, cut off 1,400 square feet and build an additional unit.
So SB 9 is a whole nother twist to all of this. So SB 9 allows, that was new legislation just signed into law. And I'm just getting through it right now, but as I stand it, you can take an existing property with a single-family house and build a new freestanding second unit on the property. It's not classified as an ADU. There's also a provision that you can subdivide a single-family lot. So you can have two and then a total of four units.
Exactly. And it's my understanding that the lot that's carved out, so to speak, can be as small as 1,400 square feet.
You know, I still need to research that. It's a question I have because we have a lot of substandard lots
Yeah.
in our residential neighborhoods and I need to come through. The law just went, became effective, I think, in the last probably three, three weeks and I
Understood, but that, that was from the League of California Cities, actually.
You're ahead of me.
Okay, thank you. Never.
So policy questions, what were those key policy questions that the planning commission discussed? And I would say this is the key discussion point by the community. We had lots of public participation and there were people on both sides of this issue. And the question, question was, should the city allow ADUs to be taller than 16 feet? The idea is that should we provide additional opportunities for ADUs? And the planning commission went back and forth on this over the two public hearings. And they're recommending an ordinance to you that allows accessory dwelling units above garages to be taller than 16 feet, up to 25 feet. Only in the R3 multifamily zoning district if the project undergoes design review. And so because we're going beyond state law, it doesn't have to be ministerial. You don't have to just go to the building department. We can do this through our typical architectural review process. So that is a key consideration for you tonight. And I know we have our planning commission chair here, Sandra Friedman, who might be able to provide additional insight on that issue to you. So some cities are removing parking requirements altogether for JADUs. And that, that is, that is an option. I think what we heard during the public hearing process is people are concerned about losing parking. We know no matter what, under state law, that accessory dwelling units, if they replace the garage, we, we can't require its replacement. But the question is, what should we do with JADUs or junior accessory dwelling units that are created within an attached garage? Of course, they can replace their garage or carport. As long as it meets setbacks and other requirements, there's probably very few lots that can actually do that. But the planning commission did discuss the driveway, which is what the issue the mayor brought up. So the, the idea that's being brought forward to you is to require a nine by 18 parking space, which is our standard size in the driveway. So long as it does not extend into the public right of way and is not located in the front yard setback. So replacement parking is required. So replacement parking is required for JADUs in the in the city of Monterey under the proposed ordinance. So JADUs and ADUs bring up a really interesting question regarding short-term rentals. So it's really interesting that the government code says that ADUs permitted under the government code standards cannot be short-term rentals. So we don't need to have that worry if they're in the ministerial process for a building permit. But the policy question is open for other types of ADUs. Local agencies may require that the property be used for rental of terms longer than 30 days. But ADUs permitted ministerially under the government code shall be rented for terms longer than 30 days. The ordinance in front of you continues our short-term rental approach, which is to require more than 30 days for all rentals in the city of Monterey. So affordability requirement, this keeps coming up. Can the city mandate this ADU be affordable? And the answer is no. We cannot authorize or mandate an affordable rent requirement. The city could regulate rents through a rent stabilization program or possibly through incentives. If the city has water available and wants to enter into a contract with the property owner, they could require that affordability. I do want to point out, one of the issues we're going to be grappling with in our housing element is state law does require the city to include in its general plan housing element plans to incentivize and promote ADUs. So while this ordinance establishes the basic framework for ADUs, one of the things that we'll be looking at very soon here is how to actually incentivize them as required by law. So in summary, we're recommending that you approve the first reading by title only of an ordinance amending the city code related to accessory dwelling units and juniors and accessory dwelling units. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We also, I should mention, the ordinance was basically refined and prepared by Erin Lapperly. She is a housing, she's an attorney with Wolf, Harman, and Lipman. She specializes in housing and has been instrumental through this whole process to make sure we comply with the multiple accessory dwelling unit laws. And she is on panel as well.
Well, I'm sure glad that our Community Development Director and Erin know about all this because it's certainly a moving target, isn't it? And who knows what the next legislative session will bring forth. Council questions before we go to the public, then we'll bring it back for discussion. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks for that very clear report. So with respect to affordability, I guess I'm disappointed that the state prohibits us from requiring affordability. That's really a disappointing thing to learn, but you did say we could incentivize. So is that aspect of this going to come back to us at another meeting where we can discuss potential incentives? And and if so, I would be interested in in how we could incentivize with the condition of affordability.
Yes. It will be coming back to the city council, how the city will choose to incentivize accessory dwelling units. And it's mandated by our housing element, but it's probably something that we'll take up even sooner than that.
And when we do that, we could have an affordability requirement as part of the incentive.
If it's tied, so ADUs, we can't mandate or require it unless we have an incentive to give them, and they take advantage of that. For example, I think the key one is water. If the city wants to, and we don't have that much water, so I don't want everyone to think we can build tons and tons of units, but if we incentivize water, we could deed restrict the unit for affordability.
Is there going to be anything else? Because it seems like the state's taken away a lot of the things we would normally use, like parking, for example, or height or things like that.
Things we're seeing likes is cities potentially working with nonprofits, like Habitat for Humanity or another group that tries to help leverage the the capital to construct an ADU. And so Habitat for Humanity might actually develop the ADU on the property. And the city may be a partner in some of that financial approach, maybe through our Community Development Block Grant Program. And then that unit would be deed restricted for a period of time. Actually, with Community Development Block Grant, it probably has to be in perpetuity, but we'd have to look at other funds if it could expire. So maybe a property owner allows Habitat for Humanity or a group to build a ADU on the property and is deed restricted for 20 or 25 years. And then you know, we could potentially look if financial incentives are being provided.
Thank you. Yes, Tyler, anything yet? And then I, because of this format, I can't see Councilmember Ed or Councilmember Dan right now, so they'll just have to jump in when they want to join the conversation.
I'm ready. But I'll wait for Tyler.
Okay, Councilmember Tyler, please.
Thanks, Dan. I just wanted to, Kim, if you could just help clarify for everybody, what exactly is the city proposing to do beyond what the state law is? So I think that there was some discussion of that in regards to the parking, but I was just hoping that you could clarify that.
Yeah, so the the most significant step is allowing accessory dwelling units over 16 feet in height in the multifamily district. So that is a huge incentive to some property owners in our multifamily districts to build for additional ADUs in that district. I think that's the primary incentive.
Okay, I think that's it for me for now, at least.
So, Amir, can I, if you don't mind, can I tag on to that question?
Of course.
It's a multifamily home, and they want to put in a ADU or a JADU, I guess. Do they have to, do they have to live on that multifamily home, the owner?
No, it's only required if you're establishing a junior accessory dwelling unit. So if it's an accessory dwelling unit, there's no owner occupancy requirement allowed under state law.
Okay. Then I have one more question, and I think I brought this up under the rent stabilization question with our with somebody else, but I mentioned that we have single-family zones. That means one family on one piece of property. But if we're going to three families on one piece of property, it just seems logical or it just seems common sense that that is no longer a single-family zone. It's now a multifamily zone.
So it's interesting because I think the planners, when all of this was first being adopted, a lot of the legislation talks about it. It doesn't change the density or the zoning of the property. Now logically, you can potentially have three families living on a single-family property, and it's, but it's still considered single-family in terms of zoning and density.
Okay. So far, until the state changes that.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got a question when you get, Dan, was there any?
No, that was it.
Okay. So thank you for this. This is kind of reminds me of being in high school, trying to understand the periodical chemical chart. So to follow, I just want to highlight, I heard that this proposes predominantly an R3 change that says on an R3 over a garage with design approval up to 25 feet. So if we're talking multifamily, we're saying R3.
Correct.
Right. So in the R1 category, we currently have a height limit for ADUs of 16 feet.
Correct.
And this is recommending that we stay with that.
Yes.
I think that's all I had for now, and I just wanted to say I'm encouraged by the fact that some folks have been contacting your department, saying that they'd like to understand this and see how they might be able to take down a carport, put something up above that, and then include that into a garage and improve their properties. Because as you know, much of our property is turn of the century and walked into older, in disrepair in some cases. So there's an opportunity to actually see properties improve in our three category and a reasonable approach in the R1s, which would still be 16 feet. So I'm encouraged that people are already contacting your office to see how they can navigate that. The other part, too, is in the incentivizing. If we were to have water, that would be great. But one thing I'd like to see, could we adopt in the future a set of plans that are ready to go? I know some cities have done that to to cut through some of the expense of the design. So people that are in an R1, say, and they want to add 16-foot or below, and they don't want to have to spend all the money for the design, the architect, if we had some possibility of having some of those already ready to, you you pick one of the five, and that's the design. But then again, we have the challenge of, well, how do you make sure that the ADU is kind of matching some of the architecture of the home itself?
I think one of the things we could do in this arena, what we're finding is the most challenging in terms of construction with ADUs is they actually have to still comply with the energy code.
Right.
So if we could have a set of plans where the energy calculations were already done and the assemblies were identified, I think that could really, whatever skin you put on the building, you know, if we could have the energy assemblies defined, that could really help.
It could save the initial costs of getting started, and it might be more attractive for people to say, well, yeah, I could do this if I can save, you know, $10,000 or $15,000 because there's a design already done. So just a thought for future. Okay, that's all I had.
Mayor, I just I just have one more question here. Sorry.
Okay, well, Tyler's patiently waiting.
I didn't see you.
I already went.
Okay.
But but, excuse me, but since you have me, I did, I did have another question that came up.
Councilmember Tyler, go ahead.
So the short, the discussion around the short-term rentals, it seems like we're just kind of leveraging our same policy. But I'm also hearing that this is still a big, I'm not sure, I'm not sure big is the right word to define it, but there's still an issue of short-term rentals in the city. So I'm wondering, is there anything further that we can do, particularly regarding the ADUs to avoid folks developing those and potentially being able to get around the law?
I don't know. Erin, do you have any suggestions or to that?
And for how to enforce?
We have an active enforcement program, just so everyone knows, against short-term rentals, where we are regularly citing and moving, you know, enforcing against that issue. So I don't know if there's anything else beyond that we can do.
Yeah, beyond the enforcement program, I'm not sure.
And I could offer that part of the problem or part of the opportunity would be on the front end for the education, making sure that anybody who is going forward in an ADU environment is well aware that here's the law, that it's not legal, and vacation rentals are strictly enforced and, you know, basically make sure that the education is out there at the front end. And we have the opportunity at the counter.
That's a good point. And Councilmember Ed had brought up about having ready-made designs and models. The city of Seaside has those.
Yeah.
And they did, I think they actually had model units, as I remember, built on one of their city sites for everybody to look at. I don't know how many alternatives they have, but there's a local entity that we can look into, and I'm sure many other cities are doing the same thing. Councilmember Dan, you were waiting, I think.
Yeah, thank you. So I understand why we go from a five-foot setback on front and side or back and side lots because lots are just too small to to put ADUs on. Does that also apply to quarter-acre lots, three-quarter acre lots? I mean, any lots?
Any lot in the city of Monterey.
Okay.
That's residentially used, they would say, not commercial.
Right.
All right, so if we've asked our questions, we can obviously discuss this after public input. So we'll we'll open the public hearing at this point to see if we have any people who would like to share their good ideas. Anyone in the council chambers? Matt?
Yes, we do, and we'll ask this gentleman, and you're speaking on this issue. Perfect. Please join us, and if you could share us, share your name with us.
On the microphone itself, there's a little button.
You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. My name is Nicholas Kite. I am actually originally came here to speak on this golf. But I just heard where I work come up quite often. I am the Director of Restores for Habitat for Humanity Monterey Bay. So hearing about ADUs really got me excited. So we are eagerly looking forward to building an ADU in Monterey County. We have a project hopefully going on in Marina. It's our first one down here. So I really hope that, you know, you guys can do whatever it takes to make it easier for affordable housing in this community, whether it's providing us incentives to, you know, pass on to homeowners to ensure affordable housing or affordable rent in those ADUs. That'd be great. This isn't my area of expertise. My area of expertise is reselling you stuff to raise money for this, but I just felt that I just wanted to eagerly, you know.
So you never know what you're going to learn when you come to a city council meeting, do you?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like there are no other members of the public here in the council chambers to speak on this item.
Thank you. Clementine, is there anyone online?
No, there are no hands raised.
All right, then I will close the public input part of the public hearing, bring it back for the council for discussion, action. It sounds really good to me. I'm ready to go, and I certainly want to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Yeah, if I can start with a comment, Mayor, I, yeah, I'm I'm ready to move on this. I think this is a great progress. I know that we have all spent a lot of time on this policy heights, ADUs, and we've learned more as the the law has changed slightly in the last few weeks. But I want to say thank you, a big thank you to the Planning Commission, because the ones that really had a heavy lift, multiple meetings, multiple folks to attend to speak on it, ground through a lot of the details, and and I'm glad I was able to watch a couple of meetings to learn even more and be prepared for tonight. But thank you, Sandy. I know our chair is here tonight, and thank you all for the planning commissioners that have weighed in on this and have given us what I think is a really updated, improved document and a change to the policy. So thank you very much for all that hard work.
Very well said. Was it Councilmember Allen who was next? Yes, please.
Yeah, so I'm ready to support the motion. I did want to speak to some of the points Kim brought up. I would support higher than 16 feet, but only in R3 zones. And I did kind of hear the concern about other council members, though, that somehow every zone could somehow be made R3 in the future by the state. So if we did that, I think we want to make sure that somehow we carve out that distinction to make sure that we don't have we don't have that cropping up in our ones or our twos. But I think it does make sense in our threes and could lead to some more housing. So I would support that in principle. I would also support the idea of allowing the parking space, a nine-by-18-foot parking space to be provided in a driveway for the the JADUs. I thought that makes sense. Obviously, we need parking, but I don't think it necessarily has to be a garage, but there has to be parking. So it seems like that would be a compromise that would meet both of those needs. And I would support exploring incentives that would be explicitly linked to affordability. So for me, I am a little, I guess, concerned. We're going to have more of these, which will mean more density in places that it may not be the best. Ideally, we'd want density in our commuter corridors, in our commercial corridors, where there's mass transit, where there's bike lanes, things like that. So this isn't maybe really ideal. And it seems like it would be good if we could at least leverage affordable units as a as some kind of benefit to the public at large. So anything we can do to leverage affordable units, I'm interested in hearing. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
Yes, I'm just going to throw out some things that I I think were part of the discussion last time that I'm wondering if the council would be willing to consider to kind of push ourselves To kind of push ourselves to go a a little bit further here. I appreciate the the planning commission's effort in working with those that spoke during. Their public comment sessions. Um but I think that, again, as I was sharing last year, I think this is a. Uh an opportunity that we have here to. To really push ourselves and and go a little bit further. So I'm just going to throw some some ideas out. And let's see if any stick or pique interest in any of my colleagues to be supportive of. Um. So the idea of removing the exemption of of owner occupancy requirement indefinitely. Um I I understand that the state might. Do that um mi- might extend that out, but I think why don't we just make it easy and and let that be. Um common practice for the city. So I'm 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 wondering what. Your all's thoughts are on that. Uh another piece is um re- removing it um exceptions for replacement of garage covered parking carport. Um. So I think that. We're good with ADUs, but uh JAD use. So I'm wondering if we can consider that.
I'm sorry, Charlie, can you repeat that one again? I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, so if if I understand correctly. There can be a replace, uh we don't have to replace. Um in ADU, like let's say you you. Use a parking space to develop an ADU, use a garage or something, but it's not the same for a JADU. Um so you that you still have that parking requirement. So can we remove that parking requirement is is what I'm saying for for the JAD use? Um, yeah. Um another one is removing or loosening the far the floor area ratio requirements. And then uh allow allowing ADUs to be constructed within the existing proposed commercial and mixed use buildings, which is something that. I brought up before we had this discussion. Around ADUs, some somewhat similar, but not necessarily related. It wasn't specifically about ADUs, but it was about. Allowing residential and mixed use spaces on the first floor. Um but anyways, I I feel like there's an opportunity here for us to use some commercial spaces that may be underutilized. Okay, I think I'm going to stop there. So I I threw out a few. I'm not sure if there's any interest for my colleagues in in pursuing any of those alternatives.
Okay, thank you. Uh any other council input? My thought is I would like to adopt what the planning commission. Has presented to us. Because the it's so complex and convoluted out there. And then the excellent suggestions that Councilmember Tyler discussed, I'd like to look at at a later date, but. I would simply like to get this in place so we can go forward with people who maybe are waiting to develop ADUs. So that's where I am.
So I I would just point out that the state law is already in effect, so people can move forward with developing ADUs. Um I'm 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 wondering if any of my other colleagues would be interested in pursuing something today. Um but if the idea is for a future date, I'd be. I'd I'd also hope that we can commit to following up on a specific date as opposed to kind of something ambiguously in the future.
Um, was that a was that a motion on your side?
Oh, well, I don't know. Think we have a motion yet, but I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Staff recommendations then?
Yes.
Okay. Uh with um.
We have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thank you.
Um is there a way, I was just going to say in that motion that we could. Um look at um some of the alternatives or the additives that Tyler said, maybe in a year, come back in a year? Or come back in six months or whatever?
Yeah, I don't think I'd make it part of the ordinance, but we can certainly make it part of uh consensus and direction.
I just wanted.
That sort of timeline wouldn't be in an ordinance, so to speak.
No, I I just want to make it part of the motion, not the ordinance itself.
Oh, okay, yes, you can amend the a motion to adopt the ordinance, staff recommendation. Uh with further discussion, come back with any year for other. Options if you I'll put it that way, if that's agreeable to the second.
Yes, it is.
Okay. More discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Um, yeah, I'm I'm going to support the motion. I think this is a good start. Um I think Tyler, Councilman Tyler brings up some interesting ideas, but I think it it I would like to hash them through. So. At least initially, I don't support the idea of getting rid of. Parking requirements for JAD use. I think a lot of JAD use are going to be taking the garage. And I like the idea that staff brought up about allowing them to use. I don't think it has to be a garage. I think it could be a space in the driveway. But I think there has to be some parking. Otherwise, you're going to create a lot of. I think you're going to create a lot of issues in neighborhoods, some of which already have. Parking issues. So I I at least at this time, I I wouldn't be ready to go that far. Um I would be interested in looking at. The idea of first floor, some first floor commercial. Being um able to be developed as housing. I think there's a lot of, I think, I mean, I could imagine a lot of small business people. Liking that idea where they buy a bit, they buy up, they buy up a parcel. And they live on the parcel and they have their business on the parcel. Um I I could see that being a real.
Uh incentive both to business as well as create more housing.
So I'd be interested in that. And sort of looking at allowing this in mixed use and um. A- and and some commercial first floor areas. But I do think these ideas probably need a little bit more vetting than we're going to be able to do. Right now, right here. So I I would favor moving forward, but I would like staff to bring back. Uh, you know, at least that idea. And I didn't quite, again, there was a lot Tyler had to say. I wasn't able to necessarily follow it all. I picked up on those two ideas.
Yeah, and I would point out that uh. My stepson, when he was at Cal, actually lived in a an apartment on the ground floor in a commercial building. And it's not at all uncommon, and I think there's a great potential for that. Then I also would like to explore it a little more. Would it be an A I ADU? Would it be a studio? Apartment? How do you add an is an ADU an additive or a JADU additive to already the bonuses? That are permitted in commercial and mixed zones already. So a lot of a lot of detail, but totally open to the idea. Anyone else?
Yeah, just to try to wrap up my thoughts on this.
Yes, please, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, I I I look forward to, you know, continuing to talk about, you know, changes and adaptations as we learn more and give staff an opportunity. Um to flush out some of this, a lot of, a lot of new legislation that's still being interpreted as we've heard. Our uh planning and economic development director speak to tonight. Um so I think that there's some um. Uploading and up speed on getting used to some changes and adaptations from the state. But this is tonight, we're acting on amending chapter. Uh thirty eight of the city code. So I like to say focus on what we're. What we have in front of us is to act on that to move this forward. Uh and act on what the planning commission is already. Ground through and taken a lot of testimony and a lot of. Of very fine considerations. So I don't want to take this and start adding things to it. So I'm going to support the motion to move ahead. Look forward to continuing conversations in the future for some of the other ideas.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments? Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so I I I appreciate staff's effort. I appreciate the planning commission's effort in. Moving this forward. Um I know that a lot of work has gone into it, so I I sincerely appreciate appreciate all the work being done. I. It it's it's a little bit, I guess, a li- a little bit frustrating because. You know, these things I'm not bringing up for the first time. This is discussed a year ago before it even went to the planning commission. So it's not like I'm just bringing this up for the first time tonight. But I'm hoping that we can clarify. I appreciate. Uh Councilmember Albert suggesting a a specific time, whether it be six months, a year. So I'm I'm hoping that maybe we could clarify what that looks like. Um and then just one thing on the um. On the. Units. And and commercial spaces to mix use spaces, you know, I just kind of. Add on to my my grievance here a little bit in that. I I presented this to the council maybe two years ago now. And it hasn't come back to us. It's been completely radio silent. And I, again, know that staff has a huge workload and there's a lot going on. Um I'm just w- wondering. You know, why why it's taking this long to for us to have that come back to us first to consider? So I'm just sharing that publicly because this is something that we've all agreed to as a council to give direction to staff to come back on. And it's not clear about when that's coming back. So um I I'm I look forward to that discussion and and hopefully we can. Maybe talk about that sooner rather than later because it seems like a relatively easy thing for us to to address.
And thank you so much.
Mayor, can I just make a comment real quick because I think it pertains to that um comment? Um so we've noticed that public hearing for next Tuesday in front of the planning commission, so they'll be considering it for the second time. So I would hope by prior to the end of the year, you'll have. A recommendation from the planning commission on specific plan amendments.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Kim. I appreciate that.
Kim to the rescue.
Da da da.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hafaj.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. All right, let's go to our public appearance item and that's to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Monterey Stinging Jellies Disc Golf Club. Something that I know the good members of the golf uh. Disc Golf Club and our outstanding staff have been working on. Over several months, and so I'm sure we're all very pleased to have this on our agenda. So we can move forward with it, and we always appreciate groups who are not only willing to sign an agreement, but to put some money forth and also. Get the do the elbow grease to in- improve a site. And and so we really do appreciate that cooperative effort and. Not asking what your government can do for you, but what you can do for your city. So I'm very pleased with that. So with that, back to our well-known city manager.
Yeah, I'll punt it directly over to Parks and Recreation Director Karen Larson.
Okay.
Johann.
Karen, are you going, are you with us?
Yes, sir. We're just getting the presentation ready.
Okay, thank you. I I can't. One of the the disadvantages here of the hybrid meeting is obviously we can't see what's going on in the council chambers. I don't know if that's something we can work on or not, but we'll. We'll see.
Thank you for your patience as we got that set up.
No problem.
Can't hear too well.
Yes, Karen, if you could get that microphone closer to you, we'd appreciate it.
I think it got turned off, Karen. Can you just turn that mic back on?
Okay, how's that?
Oh, wonderful.
Get super close.
And another staff member to the rescue.
One time. Good evening, Mayor Roberson and council members. Tonight I have a brief presentation describing a partnership for Disc Golf at Ryan Ranch with funding for ADA improvements. And a use agreement that includes maintenance support. The Monterey Stinging Jellies Disc Golf Club has a history of providing disc golf facilities and activities. At Ryan Ranch. And the city would like to formalize an agreement to provide disc golf to the community. For this public nonprofit partnership, the club will provide. Funding for construction of ADA improvements. Disc golf amenities. And general maintenance. Preliminary estimates from engineering are approximately thirty five thousand one hundred dollars. That will include a concrete accessible parking stall with striping. Accessible pathway to the first tee. And an ADA portable restroom with hand washing station and vanity screen. The course will include thirty tee pads and signs. As well as thirty movable baskets. While in compliance with the mitigated negative declaration measures, the club maintenance efforts will include. Course maintenance such as mowing, trimming and litter abatement. Maintaining infrastructure and golf amenities such as baskets, tees and signage. As well as general maintenance to include an ADA restroom. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Monterey Stinging Jellies. As well as amend the resolution to include Ryan Ranch Disc Golf ADA improvements. And authorize the finance director to increase fiscal year twenty two revenue. And appropriate thirty five thousand one hundred dollars to the capital project fund. For the Ryan Ranch Disc Golf ADA improvements project. And this concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions and hear public comment.
All right, questions from our council?
I would like to start, Mayor.
Yes, please, Councilmember Dan.
Uh so I just have a couple of questions about the improvements that are being planned.
Yes.
Is that uh is that going to be under the direction of the city, constructed by the city, new somebody coming in as a contractor coming in and doing that?
Yes, sir. Uh we will be. Contracting with a job order contractor that we have with the city.
Okay, so that's.
We've already been working with.
The city employees that are doing that. We're actually going out to to bid for a contract.
With for a job order contractor like an on, we used to call them on-call contractors, so we call them job order contractors now.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have is um the improvements, not the improvements, the maintenance means that. When you go in and. And mow lawns, cut, pick, things like that.
Yes.
Um i- is that going to be the responsibility of the Disc Golf Club?
Yes.
Okay, and is there an liability for the city if someone's going in there on our property maintaining?
We're we're working through that through the city attorney's office, and they'll all be built into the agreement.
So there'd be some type of indemnity cause of some type?
That's correct.
Okay, that that was my only real concern about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? Before we hear from the public, Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, so I I received an email from one member of the public asking about the environmental accommodations. Um I spoke into the city manager about it, so I think I understand them, but I'm wondering if for the benefit of the public. You could speak to um the environmental concerns that were raised originally and how our agreement. With the stinging jellies will address those.
Well, I know a lot of it was interven- environmental that had to do with the mitigated negative declaration, and actually, Kim would probably be more knowledgeable about that portion of the project. Thank you, Kim.
It's been a while since I've read the mitigated or actually wrote the mitigated negative declaration, but we actually commissioned a biotic report. For the site as part of that document. If I remember, the sensitive species on the site included the. Dusky-footed wood rat. They have um. Sort of um stick structures that they build for habitat, and so those were identified on the site. They're also very easily discernible. So the mowing plan is they have that you can easily avoid. The um dusky-footed wood rats nests, um so that's possible. Also, there was um a lot of the grasses up there were invasive, but there was one area where it was more of a native grass area. And that area will be avoided with the mowing. And I think those were the two primary issues that I remember in terms of biotic resources.
Yeah, I think the city manager mentioned that we would later have a kind of maintenance con- maintenance agreement. That would outline the specific areas that, you know, should be avoided. Uh not mowed for those reasons.
Yes, sir. We've already started to build that into a. A placeholders within an agreement.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we go public?
Yep, uh this is Ed.
Yes, Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, so Karen, if you could address um how this location in this new agreement. Um will will fit into the. Park master plan that we did about two years ago. And is it in there or is there a need to amend the the master plan?
No, sir. There's no need to amend the master plan. It is part of the master plan and it has been approved through the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, okay, great. Uh I don't have any questions, but I'll just, while I've I've got the the mic on, I'll just say. Uh for those that are members of the club. Thank you for your patience. I know it's taken a while. And uh this is an exciting thing to be able to move forward on. Mr. Mayor, that's all ahead.
Okay. Now, I I would uh like to say that. The city in the public record has received thirty four emails and letters of support. Posted on our website for the council and the public to read. Uh that's not to discourage people from speaking, but. Uh I I think it's pretty clear that this uh we're excited about getting this uh agreement in place. I think it's pretty clear that this we're excited about getting this agreement in place. And unless if you have a real compelling reason to say yes, do it. We invite you to do that, but on the other hand, for the sake of your time and our time, if we're all pretty much in agreement, we'll just make sure that we garner and and watch our time. So with that, or one person can say, hey, we have a whole bunch of folks here who agree. So I just encourage that. So with that, anyone in the audience, I know we have one person in the audience who wants to speak on this.
Yes, we do. And he's coming right up to the podium and we'll start the timer.
We need that microphone turned on.
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor Roberson and city council members. My name is Chad Guile. I'm the president of the Monterey Stinging Jellies Disc Golf Club. I would like to thank Parks and Rec Director Karen Larson and Assistant City Manager Nat Rajanis-Sathari for their work on this project as well as all the city staff that have contributed. We've been working on this project for literally years and seeing the the end of the tunnel is a fantastic feeling. I just want to talk a little bit just about our club because I know you're entering with a use agreement with our club. And I want to explain kind of where we're at. The Monterey Stinging Jellies, we were founded as a 501(c)(4) in 2006 and coordinated with Parks and Rec Commission. We fundraised, installed and maintained the first Disc Golf course in Monterey at Don Dobby Park that same year. And in 2008, we created a PRP to establish a course at Ryan Ranch. Up until 2018, we ran that course successfully. We hosted the World Championship of Disc Golf in 2011. In 2016, we hosted the NorCal Team Invitational. And we're just very excited to get tournaments back in there. And I tell you this not really for a history lesson, but to highlight the most important part of the club, our members. Each of these events involve a massive amount of work and every hour put in is done on a volunteer basis. The reality today is our club is made up of some of the most driven and motivated individuals in this community. Our current board includes Dr. Jason Garrett, the Assistant Director of Admissions and Operations at CSUMB, Sean Bearman, owner of Bearman Carpets, which has been in business in Monterey since 1975, Nick Ite, who you heard from, the Director of Resources at Habitat for Humanity in Monterey. He's also been appointed to the Marina City Council as Recreation Cultural Services Commissioner for the city of Monterey. Our club membership includes Sean Adams, owner of Monterey Signs and Santa Cruz Signs, which has been trusted with countless sign projects by both the city of Monterey and its local businesses, Tony Bursiaga, Trevor Hodgins, Brian Schoenfelder, Tracy Algar, classified or certified teachers and school district employees. We have members who are real estate developers, landscapers, journalists, university students, and even an attorney or two. So when you weigh your decision tonight, you can rest easy knowing this club is made up of strong individuals who will make a positive impact in this community. Again, we would just like to thank city staff for the work they have put into this project and look forward to bringing an accessible recreational facility back to Monterey. I'm happy to answer any questions if city council has any.
Now, thank you so much for sharing that background with us. So Nat, anyone else in the chambers?
No one else in the chambers waiting in line to speak.
Okay, Clementine, do we have anyone online?
We do. We have one. It is Jane Resch and I will allow her to speak.
All right, welcome back, Jane.
Hi, thank you, council. It sounds like a wonderful, wonderful project and just bear with me while I vent a little. Perhaps this can be held out as a model. I'm I'm very frustrated with the pickleball at Villa Parizo Park. I see at Ryan Ranch, there's 75 acres used by small groups of Disc Golfers in two to two to eight people groups. And Villa Parizo has been allocated prioritized times when up to 40 and 50 people descend on the two courts. I see this group, the Disc Golfers, as mowing, maintaining portable toilets, tree maintenance, weed work, volunteer work, $35,000 of contribution. And I am so jealous. And I I hope you'll keep working with me and the immediate neighbors at Villa Parizo Park while we try to come up continuing with hopefully some constructive ideas. We're at an impasse right now because the Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association will not proceed without the city decision makers and that's at an impasse. I have one more idea I'm doing, but I commend the constructive approach of the Disc Jelly Group and totally support where you're going with this. Thank you.
And Eugene. Next, we have Tammy Jennings. Tammy, please go ahead.
Yes, hi. I'm Tammy Jennings from Monterey. I am disabled and it's very nice to know that there is maybe another opportunity for recreation for our group. So it's nice to know that and I'll probably be in touch. So thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you. And there are no further hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Well, thanks so much. As I said, we've got a lot of really positive emails and input and I want to assure everyone that we have an opportunity to read those. All right, so council, we're ready for a motion, I would think.
I'll make the motion for acceptance of the donation to move ahead with the contract agreement with Monterey Stinging Jellies Disc Golf.
Okay.
Second.
And we have motion in a second. Any more discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, just I think Ed said it well earlier. I'd just like to express my appreciation to the club members for collaborating with the city. I know we wanted this to happen much sooner and of course we ran into a lot of financial issues due to COVID. So the fact that the club has stepped up and really made this possible, I think speaks very well of their club members and we appreciate that.
Well said. All right, roll call, please, Clementine.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. Next item is a city manager's update on COVID-19 response efforts. And our well-known city manager won't punt this time because he's going to be the star of this presentation. The floor is yours, Hans.
Yes, thank you. Nat, can you share the screen? Can you put it up, please?
Yep, I will share your screen and your presentation. Late. And here we go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the the update for October 19, 2021, 585 days since we declared the COVID. And see, next slide, please. And I I start, I I don't have a great slide presentation or let's say it's of course a great slide presentation, but it's not a long one.
I. That's the same thing. When you say it's it's short, it means it's automatically great, Hans.
Okay. I appreciate that. Here's the good news. The state of California and two other states are standing out in the or four, three other states are standing out in this graphic as states that that have lower transmission and infection rates as all the other states of the continental United States. And when you go into the next slide, please, you actually see that in the state of California, we have counties that are trending in the third lowest tier and this is the moderate tier. And when you look closer, you you see a very familiar county there, which is the county of Monterey. So we are trending in the moderate tier for about five days now. We we got into that last week, Thursday. And you can, we should be all very proud of of this accomplishment because it is a direct result of a variety of of education and measures that have been implemented for for many, many months now. And and there's there's part of the reward. If just to put this into context, the next slide will do that. This is what what's going on in the United States of America. And you see that only 121 counties in the United States are trending right now moderate. So 3.76% of our nation is in moderate and Monterey is one of them. And if you go, if you remember when we go back almost a year and two months ago, we were always at the back end. Santa Cruz was was lifting restrictions, et cetera. It feels good that that we have caught up with a lot of those things. Next slide. So I I always put this up to just show you the trend, how we are doing. And these are the the numbers published by the Monterey County Health Department and they give you a seven-day average. And and I just encourage you, read just the bold numbers, unvaccinated residents and the infection rates there. It starts with on the top 17.5 goes down to 15.8 and 8.7 with the October 4th data. And now if you click to the next slide, basically, look how we are trending. Now it's 6.8 and 2.2. And and the same, if you look at the the numbers of hospitalization rates, you see that the number was in the beginning at the Delta cert when the Delta search hit us, 1.8 per 100,000 residents going down today. And they are always backlogged about seven days, the data points, 1.2 per residence. Today, hospitalization rate was 10 in the whole county of Monterey with respect to COVID. So we definitely trend downwards. That's that's what I tried to express with those arrows. 96% of city employees are vaccinated. So our our requirements for vaccine and testing has resulted that we have 95.6%. So I'm allowed to say 96% of employees Tyler Tyler gets gets my humor. So so that that's that's pretty good. We are accommodating around 3.6 employee, 3.6% of our employees in various functions and point eight employees, almost 1%. We cannot accommodate. Next slide. Again, here's a quick distribution of where where we have employees and we have accommodations right now. The numbers are are, I I wouldn't put too much weight into the numbers overall because it just depends on on the number N. How many do you have actually in a sample of information services or library or Parks and Recreation or police? So those numbers are all a little bit shaky, so to speak, when when you say but 3.6% of our employees are accommodated and point 77 not. But you see that before the implementation and after the inflammation, we we were already pretty good, but but we were able to improve. Next slide, please. So far, we hosted 84 vaccine clinics. Today was another one at the farmer's market where we offer all three doses of vaccines, Pfizer, Moderna and Johnson and Johnson. We we have started handing out booster shots of Pfizer right now. Moderna has been approved for for booster shots and we'll expect that we will have that also in on hand in about two, two weeks. And we'll be able to supply that as well to interested folks who who already had two shots of Moderna and want another one, the booster shot. So that's all what I have for you today and I'm here to answer your questions.
All right, thanks for for the good oversight and the good news, really. And we hope the trend continues. Questions for our city manager, council member Allen?
Yeah, it's not really a question more of just a comment that I wanted to thank our our city staff for, you know, getting out and getting vaccinated in such large numbers, nearly 96%. And I would note that almost 100% of our police department is vaccinated. I'm seeing in other cities across the country that that this is is controversial in those cities. And our police department has chosen to work with the city. And I and I really want would like our our city staff to know we care about your health and we appreciate that you care about the health of our community. And that's really what this is all about. And just wanted to express my appreciation of the city staff.
Thank you. Okay, and any public comment in chambers or online?
None in the chambers.
And none online?
Okay, very good. And I'm sure our well-known city manager will keep us updated and we'll keep our fingers crossed that it we we turn the curve, we certainly hope. Council comments. Tyler, you want to start us off? Any reports about outside agencies and activities?
Can you come back to me? I just need a moment to think. I wasn't ready to be called on first.
Okay, well, then.
And I may not have anything at all. Just just.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Dan. I.
Okay, council member Dan, please.
I have no comments tonight.
Councilmember Ed?
Of course, I can't pass up the opportunity and I'm ready.
Okay, well, your colleagues have conceded their time to you.
No, I just wanted to say, you know, this was a fun council meeting tonight because we got to accomplish some really good things. See the community and see the Disc Golf get accomplished. I just want to say this last couple of weeks was Ambag and Transportation Authority meetings. And there's a lot of things going on in the Ambag world with the arena numbers. There'll be more of that following and I'm sure Kim or Planning Director will be all over that and ready to make some presentations. But very complicated stuff, complicated changes with the state and stand by for more of that. I think those numbers will be towards the end of the year. We'll find out, you know, as that's processing forward. On the transportation front, our executive director has had his first month under his belt and he's doing outstanding. And happy happy to report that the Transportation Authority has got a very strong board, a lot of projects that are moving their way through the EIR or the habitat species mitigation process on Highway 68. And I think after the first year, probably be time to ask our Transportation Authority Director maybe come and give us an update on 156, Highway 68 and some some major projects and major news coming in 2022. And that's it.
Very good. Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to meet with some of our residents who are interested in undergrounding our power lines and utilities. And I I thought they had some really interesting information to share as we as we look at infrastructure for the city and a possible infrastructure plan. I think we should consider that and whether that could be incorporated into our plan. I don't know whether it can be done or not, but I think it should be part of the discussion. And I'm also just wondering if we might want to invite a representative from the group that's been organizing about undergrounding to come and speak to the whole council. Because I think they had some interesting ideas about ways that the revenue that would be needed could be generated as well as about the various benefits. So I think it might be of interest to the whole council.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. They I had an opportunity to attend their meetings, which are on Mondays, but then them being the mayor's representative right now to the Water Management District, so I have that conflict. But they they really do. They they know their stuff. They've done a lot of great research. You're absolutely right. Councilmember Tyler, you've had your think time.
Yeah, so it it feels like it's been longer, but at our Monterey One Water Meeting last month, we approved the amended the amended and restated water purchase agreement for the Pure Water Monterey and Pure Water Monterey Expansion Projects with Caliam and the Mariupenance Water Management District. So things are are moving along there as I'm sure most folks are have seen in in the media. And so it's exciting to to see that progress and hopefully we can get that under construction underway soon. I'll bring up one other thing in regards to Monterey One Water, which I've spoke to you all about a couple of times, about the two additional deep wells that we're developing for the Pure Water Monterey Base Project. And we were anticipating getting both of them online by December, but because of the slowdown in supply chain, particularly copper that's required as part of the pumps that will be pumping the water into the aquifers. We're looking at February, the earliest. There's just a backup and there's there's orders in front of ours that that are going to take priority. And because of supply chain, it's just everything is slowed down right now.
we're looking at February the earliest, there's just a backup, and there's, there's orders in front of ours that, that are going to take priority, and, and because of supply chain, it's just, everything is slowed down right now, so unfortunately, we're going to have to hold out a few more months, but that's the, that's the update from, from Monterey One Water. Thanks for the extra time, Mayor.
Oh, no, thank you, I'm glad you brought that up. Last night, we had our Monterey Peninsula Water Management District meeting, and our general manager, Dave Stolt, gave his report, and again, he mentioned that the supply and demand are very, very, very close, people are continuing to conserve, and so rationing is probably two years out, and that is if the drought continues. This year, the district, Calum, did not receive ASR aquifer, aquifer storage recovery, water from the river. And even with that, it came out pretty even, and so hopefully with the rains, the, the water does go into the seaside basin where it can be used as a credit, so there is a, a certain amount in that basin right now that the district can draw on as needed, even though it didn't come from this year. So it's going to be depending on the rains, so the next couple of years are going to be anxious until the Pure Water Monterey expansion happens, then, and at that point, pun intended, the floodgates can open. Then there were a couple interesting things. Dan serves on the Water Master Board, and there's a technical agreement between them and the Water Management District. I've actually been surprised being on the Water Management District, how many technical things it does with respect to wells, wells management, water, water procurement, and so on, it's not just an agency that goes around and tells everybody, turn off your water. It does a lot of technical work and water provision, which surprised me. There were a couple of staff changes, a retirement, which is going to result in some savings. And also, the board approved the formation of a redistricting committee, like many other committees all over the state, because of the census, there's, in this case, not redistricting, probably going to be some movement, because there's an imbalance of the numbers within the district. It's not anticipated that there will be major boundary changes. And so that's basically it, and we had a good meeting, really good, bright board, so. With that, city manager reports?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, it looks like we made it, and once again, thank you to our staff who participated, and those who didn't, I noticed that a, a lot of our staff does follow our meetings, even if they don't have agenda items, and we very much appreciate that, the public input always makes a great meeting, and I thank the council as well, and as Ed said, it, some pretty exciting things, when you think about ADUs and, and agreements with the Disc Golf, things that have been going on for quite a while, so we're starting to see chucking off the list, so to speak, so with that, everyone have a good evening, and we will see you soon, we're adjourned.